I'd like to welcome everybody to the Southbridge Town Council Meeting, Monday, November 6th, 2023, 7:00 PM. McKinnon, Council Chambers. Moving on to Agenda Item Number One, Pledge Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Agenda Item Number Two, Roll Call. Madam Secretary.
Counselor Adams.
Present.
Counselor Chenier.
Present.
Counselor Daniel.
Present.
Counselor Dow.
Present.
Counselor Lozo.
Present.
Counselor Marquetti.
Present.
Counselor Montigny.
Present.
Counselor Ortiz.
Present.
Counselor Rivas.
Present.
We require, moving on to Three, considering accept the Town Council meeting minutes, Monday, October 30th, 2023.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Montigny, seconded by Ortiz. Are there any additions, corrections, or deletions to the minutes for that meeting? If not, all those in favor, opposed, unanimous, all present. Moving on to Subcommittee's. A, Department of Public Works. Counselor Adams.
Nothing to report, Mr. Chair.
Moving on to Education Human Services, Counselor Rivas.
We had, we just had a meeting at 6:00 this evening. There are no items from our meeting on this agenda.
Moving on to C, General Gov.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We're looking to schedule a meeting for this coming Monday, either at 6:00 or 7:00 PM downstairs in the Veterans Room. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Moving on to Planning and Development, Counselor Daniels.
I have nothing to report this evening.
Moving on to E, Protectors of Personal Property, Counselor Chenier.
Mr. Chairman, we had a meeting this past Wednesday night, and all the agenda items were approved on a three to nothing vote.
Moving on to Chairman's Announcements. Just one quick note tonight. I noticed that the Christmas decorations were put out by Denise Clements and her, what I call, her little army out there. It's a small group that puts a lot of hours in that nobody sees when they're at the, at the Globe Building, putting them together, and then they put them out all together without listing the whole team. I just want to call, call it the Denise Clements team, and I'd like to thank Denise and the group for all the work that they put into our Christmas decorations. Moving on to Town Manager's Announcements, Mr. Town Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. I only have a couple of things because we met last week. The Henry Street Press Box continues in progress with the completion date of December 15th. Lumber was to be delivered this week, and they'll start the framing. In regards to the Curbside Enterprise Fund, I received the draft report number, for memo number one this afternoon. I'm reviewing that information. I will have a detailed report on November 20th. We do have a call with the calling group scheduled for Monday to review the recommendations. All I'm going to state is that I'm going to need the cooperation of Council because there are some really tight deadlines here, and in order for us to be able to get the billing out, we're going to have to set the rate by January 15th. So we are under extremely tight guidelines, but I'll be working with Collins Center to make sure that all the motions and the appropriate timeline is set forward. And finally, I did have an opportunity today to attend coffee and conversation with the Town Manager at the Senior Center. When I arrived, there was a lot of vehicles in the driveway, so I thought there, I was going to have a lot of individuals that want, wish to talk to me. However, they were there playing pickleball and exercise, but I did have a small group of about a half a dozen town residents that asked a lot of great questions, especially around curbside collection and some other issues. So we know that the curbside collection, the trash, is on everybody's mind, and we'll be working to get that information out very shortly. And just a reminder, the Town Hall will be closing at 4:00 PM this Thursday, and will be closed on Friday for Veterans Day. And to all the veterans, we extend our gratitude and thanks for the service to our country as well as our communities, and that's all I have this evening.
Moving on to Agenda Item Number Seven, Presentations. We have one tonight where Counselor Adams, Dave Adams, Veterans Council Initiative of Southbridge.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm going to step away as a Town Counselor and the President, but add on the other hat of the President of the Veterans Council. Try not to take up too much of your time, but, Mr. Chairman, Town Counselors, Town Manager, Residents of Southbridge, just as required by a motion a few years ago, I am here, and the Veterans Council is here to kind of give you a quick brief, once in November and once in May, keep transparency alive best we can to what's happening with the initiative that we started a few years ago. So, since our last brief, Dresser Memorial Park is still at a 50% design because we obviously are working on the World War Memorial Park across the street from the Town Hall and by the fire station, and we continue to fundraise for that, doing our best to keep it away from any type of local taxpayer funds. We, that's not, not our intent at all, as I continue to mention. The World War Memorial Park across the street, you'll see in the next couple of days, a lot of movement happening from flagpole to three picnic tables, two solar lights, the Franco-American plaque that you see, it's already cemented and framed over there, and let's see, we have two benches, which I just finally got a phone call today and said they're ready to ship, so I wish they're, I'm hoping they'll be here this week, and DPW can take a forklift, plop them, and they're, they're a few thousand pounds apiece because they are cementing, they have the town seal on them, so there, there's not much they have to do, and those four red benches could be given back to the DPW for future use in other places in the town. That's what they requested us to do. I have provided to the Town Councils this evening, and I don't know if you could, I could zoom in on something like this, maybe I should have done it on a PowerPoint presentation, but the Franco-American plaque is over fi, about 500 pounds. It's 500 pound, I shouldn't say what it's made of or anything like that, but it is all in French, and it's to commemorate, and was donated to the town, I believe, to the town or wherever it came from many, many years ago, and it's all in French. It's to commemorate the, those Southbridge residents that had a, our French descendants who fought in World War I. So it's going right behind those picnic tables. You can see it already being framed up this evening. Something we've been talking about for some time with the Council, but it's one of these things tonight that I'm going to ask you to accept, and I will obviously recuse myself and leave the room from any type of voting. That being said, I did give the Town Council some dimensions on it. Although it looks like it's brick, it's actually going to be rock, and it's, that's going up in the next day or so because it takes a couple of days to put on, or I should say stone, not rock, and that would be completed on that. And I also gave the Town Council what it kind of looks like, the Wood Lake picture. It's not Wood Lake, it's, it's going to be Southbridge and the Franco-American, but that's what it's going to kind of look like when it's all said and done. Just wanted to give you kind of a, what the design would look like. Also, we have the World War Memorial Park established in 1938. That has already been completed. He's got a couple of things actually left to do, and they'll, they'll be flanked also by a 12 by 12 inch granite pieces on each side, and then that's, I believe, the first and only sign for that first public park in Southbridge ever put in there. So that's going to go in there right between the two benches. And I also gave that to the Town Council. It looks pretty good with the olive drab color and the, the painting and the gold leaf wording. Later on, we'll be adding some cameras and then thank you plaques for donors that donated all the funds. They'll, they'll be at a later date, but we're collecting all the names and all the donors as well, and those that wanted to be identified, we'll put that in there, and we'll put a nice plaque in there. And just to let everybody know that we've raised, or we've spent close to $100,000 on that park already. So paid by cash, we did receive, actually, the town received a $50,000 grant. By this time, we're all said and done with all the in-kind, like the trees that are back there for the opaque, which I really appreciate, we're talking about $120,000 easy with the cameras coming in, another plaque here and there, and so that park will be pretty much complete after we do a few small tweaks after Veterans Day or probably here come in the, the springtime. We do plan on, through ARPA funds that you were kind to, enough to the $50,000 to vote in, we've, we've also applied for the Shrab grant. We're waiting to hear back from the state, but I did talk to the head historian over there, and he said it sounded like a great cause. We, we gave them quite a bit of detail, even though it was supposed to be three to five sentences. So that has been established. At this point in time, Town Counselors, is any questions or anything from the public that I can answer or you deny?
Counselors? Counselor Chenier.
Maybe you can talk about the upcoming dedication that you have in.
Done. I will do that right now. So on the, on November 10th, 2023, here this Friday, we're going to have a luncheon for veterans right now. It's, we do have individuals that, and companies that are donating the funds to it, but it'll be the first large veterans luncheon here in town, Southbridge, at the Hotel Conference Center, and Mr. Keith Roberts, our Veterans Service Officer, was taking names. We're done now. We went ahead, and it's over 150 veterans and loved ones coming. We hope more will just show up by accident and not RSVP to us, but I think we have enough chow on hand to feed everybody in there. I will thank Harrington Hospital, Green Meadows, I should say, Mr. Joe Dow, the Veterans Council themselves for donating the funds, and the Hotel Conference Center for doing all the stuff that they're doing for us at this point in time. Now, on November 11th, 2023, normally we'll have a Veterans Day ceremony that will start at 11:00 in the morning, but this year, we're going to be doing a ribbon cutting, as the Counselor said, at 10:30 in the morning, ribbon cutting for the actual park, and by 11:00 o'clock, we should kick off the Veterans Day ceremony. So we're going to have about 30 chairs out there. That's already said and done. DPW is kindly enough to bring their big machine over there and suck all the leaves up and hopefully clean as much as they can. We have new plants that are going in there, or new flowers that are going in there. Hopefully, everything is like pristine on that day. Looks like the weather will hold up unless you have very thin skin and cold at anything. It'll be a little chilly, but I think we'll be fine. So we have the ribbon cutting at 10:30 and the ceremony itself at 11:00 o'clock.
Any other questions by Counsel? Just one quick question for the public. If they, if there are people that still want to donate toward the park, obviously, I think you would be accepting donations?
Absolutely. So we are a 501(c)(3). We do accept donations. We do, we, not only do we accept them, when our meetings, in our minutes, you'll note that if somebody gives us 20 bucks and says, "I want to stay anonymous," we'll say anonymous, $20, and we vote on it, just like we would do here in the Council, so it's all written down what we accept out there. If it's somebody that donates $20,000, we accept that as well, and we put, but we have to find out what the reason for the donation. So the Veterans Council itself is just not building a memorial park, but it does the parades. With a little bit of help from the town, we really do appreciate the money that you give us to annually, and it is audited annually, by the way. Not to make a long story short, we keep track of all the money that goes through, and we're, everything is up to date on taxes. Everything is legit.
In closing, I'd like to thank you for your service to your country.
Thank you.
And a special thanks for your service to the town of Southbridge. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Moving on to Agenda Item Number Eight, Citizens Forum. Are there any citizens that would like to address the Council on an issue that's not on the agenda? Counselor Marquetti has relinquished his chair as a Counselor. He's speaking as a citizen on the Citizens Forum. Mr. Marquetti?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Can you hear me? Everybody hear me? Fine. All right. I came up here tonight because I wanted to address an issue brought up last week by Counselor Daniel concerning pay-as-you-throw and curbside collection. I think there seems to be a misconception about pay-as-you-throw. I take some responsibility for that. Perhaps I didn't explain it more thoroughly. Pay-as-you-throw is simply a funding mechanism to help pay for curbside collection and to reduce waste, reduces costs, introduces fairness, and generates revenue. Homeowners would purchase colored bags imprinted with the town seal, either at the grocery store, hardware stores, wherever they shop, making it convenient to purchase the bags. The revenue from the sale of the bags would go to the town. The revenue could be used to offset the flat fee to homeowners. It would be a hybrid system such as flat fee and bags. The problem with flat fee alone is it provides, it provides no incentive to reduce the trash. Now, since we voted last spring on the curbside collection, a lot of residents have approached me, emails, texts. I, I see them when I'm at the store. I see them when I'm at the Y. I was at a meeting last week, and a, and a resident talked to me and said that, you know, they want to see, they ask about pay-as-you-throw, and they want to see it implemented in the town. They feel it's a fairer system for all. If you have two or three bags per week, and somebody puts out seven to 10 bags per week, they don't feel it's fair that there's one flat fee for all. We did send out a survey on the Curbside Committee, and we had over 1,600 responses, and overwhelmingly, the residents chose pay-as-you-throw. Now, a rough, a rough estimate on the revenue was presented by committee member Steve Gregoire, who put together a chart on cost and funding mechanisms. He just did a, a rough example. Let's say your flat fee is $300 per year, and I'm not saying that's what it will be, but it's just an example. For each housing unit, if we sold bags at a buck fifty a bag, that would raise a half million dollars and reduce the flat fee to $238 per housing unit. We also had a representative from Waste Zero attend our meetings and said the projections show a 30% reduction in waste disposal using pay-as-you-throw. So not only would pay-as-you-throw help offset the flat fee, it would also help reduce trash and reduce tipping fees, up to $150,000 potential disposal cost savings to the town. Waste Zero also, data also shows that homeowners who cut, will cut back on trash and increase recycling, which in turn would need more funding from the state. So we would have solid waste reduction, recycling increases, a collection and disposal cost drops, and environment, and environmental improvement. As I mentioned, residents feel pay-as-you-throw would be a fairer system, and as far as the Cosella contract goes, when former Town Manager McCall and Anna Smith sent out the RFP for curbside collection, Cosella Waste Management and Republic responded, and they were told at some point, "We may implement a pay-as-you-throw in the future." So they were aware, and they planned accordingly. The trucks will have cameras installed to detect colored bags. Now, the cameras are not just for detecting bags, they're also used for other, to detect other illegal dumping, such as propane tanks. They will not remove any illegal bags, they will generate a report, and it will get sent to Waste Zero. Waste Zero is the company that produces the bags, and they take care of everything. Counselor Adams, when you ran the Curbside Committee, you introduced me to Waste Zero. At the time, I have to admit, I wasn't really that keen on the ideal, but the more I learned about it, the more I became convinced that it is a pretty good, pretty good system. Page, Waste Zero will produce the bags, they'll deliver the bags to the local stores, they'll collect the revenue, and send out letters to the residents to don't comply. There is no direct cost to the town. The only thing Waste Zero cannot do, per state law, is enforcement. That's up to the town. So I know the Curbside Committee that I served on, I was a chairman, they did recommend a flat fee, but they also said at some time in the future, they recommended the Council, "Take another look at pay-as-you-throw." So I would ask at some point soon, because we have a curbside coming up pretty soon, that we take a look at this pay-as-you-throw program. EHS Subcommittee, I believe, would probably be the committee that would take a look at it. I have asked Waste Zero to come back, answer any questions that the Counselors may have. If after that, the Counselors still don't want pay-as-you-throw, then that's your decision. All, all I can say is to the residents out there who approach me and ask to talk about curbside collection and ask that we take a look at pay-as-you-throw, all I can say to them is that I, at least I tried. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Marquetti. Are there any other citizens that would like to address the Council?
Hi there. Denise Clements, 128 Country Club Place. I'm here now for two reasons. Technically, I was only here for one reason, very happy holiday stuff, but after hearing Counselor Mr. Marquetti up here and having sat through a number of those curbside collection meetings, which had an amazing committee, I must say, and I'm very proud that they took it up after the concerns were raised almost two years ago now as to what we were going to do, and it, time was coming short. I, I'm sorry, I wholeheartedly disagree with Counselor Marquetti. I realize for personal reasons, you know, the one bag a week is really nice for some people, maybe two, and that's all they're going to have to pay, but if we, as honest citizens here in this community, look around and see the amounts of trash that are happening all over Southbridge, the exorbitant cost it's going to be for those who would have to buy all those bags, or who choose not to buy the bags and then decide to litter, just dump illegally, we need to make the decision for the whole community, not for our personal selves. I had one bag last week myself. I'm willing to pay that curbside fee because it's the best thing for this community right now. I agree with Mr. Marquetti in terms of moving forward and potentially having a pay-as-you-throw or some hybrid of, which was discussed at that meeting. I also bring up to the fact that so many concerns with the billing system, you know, that Francine Farland has worked really hard to collaborate those, those systems and make sure that we can do, this town can do what it needs to do to make sure billing is fair and everybody, you know, the town is not left holding the bill or the bag. So I'm asking you to respect the, the Curbside Committee's recommendations and to move forward, move this town forward, because we only have a few more months before this change gets implemented, and to suddenly switch and expect the people of this community, who have taken years to even get it into their trash can, to now get it into a bag, I think is unrealistic, and we need to look at the greater picture for this community, and the safest seamless way to go is to start making everybody pay and move forward with a bag program as time goes on. My opinion after hearing Counselor Mr. Marquetti. Thank you. Now, I'm really here because it's time. If you've taken a look around the streets, you should be thanking the number of people that came out this weekend to bring a little holiday to our community, as we have done since 2009, smaller back then, much bigger now. We had a small but mighty crew that assisted us Friday night, Saturday, Sunday. While some of you might have been relaxing, we were up at, you know, the crack of dawn or thereby getting, getting those things out on the streets. Luckily, we were blessed with really great weather and, and really great people. I can't thank them enough, and I'm not going to say all their names because I always forget one or two, and then I feel really bad, but you are amazing people. Thank you for continuing to support the vision. We are especially grateful to sponsors this weekend. I call them sponsors because now we're kind of up to three here. We have, Subway has fed our troops for a number of years now, and they are joined this year by Central Pizza. So thank you to both businesses, local business, who continue to believe in community and trying to make the community a little bit more special at the holiday season, and also to somebody who's not local, and that's Steve's Collision, Brenda Leclair, who has consistently lent us a Penske truck for the last few years, and that has made all the difference to getting this job done in pretty much one weekend. So we're about 98% complete. You'll see a few things that still need doing. We are still working at it, and hopefully will be done in the next week. But what comes next? Well, it, of course, is the holiday parade and tree lighting. So that, I just want to remind everybody, it's time to join the parade, and to, if you would like to participate, yourself, your family, your organization, get in touch with us. Go to our Facebook, Southbridge Holiday Visions. It's a free Facebook, open, transparent, or whatever they call it. You, anybody can see our posts and get information, our contact information. She'd let us know by November 17th that you plan to participate, one way or the other. You must have some type of lights on your, on your vehicle, and whether you're pulling a trailer or just have a car lit up with maybe some reindeer antlers or something, we would like you to participate. Last year, we had 35 entries, plus our fire, our DPW, our police, so many people participated. It was amazing. We are starting at 5:00 PM this year, not 6:00, because again, so amazing. It's a long parade, and we want you to all get to the Town Common with Santa for the tree lighting, which will take place immediately after, and the children then can hang out on the Common, and the adults too, and enjoy the music. We've got live music, we've got llamas, we've got kids crafts, and of course, we have Santa. That's all free, at no cost. We are very lucky to be supported by the Southbridge Cultural Council. That is a local agency supported by the Massachusetts Cultural Council, a state agency, and we thank Ted Bartlett and his crew for realizing that, bringing a little community spirit here. Cultural community spirit helps our town as well. So those are our announcements. If you need information, again, Southbridge Holiday Visions on Facebook. You can also email us at southbridgeholidayvisions@yahoo.com. Reach out. My phone number's everywhere. Ask somebody if you want to find me, Denise Clements, if you don't know me. Somebody does. So if you want to get involved, again, reach out, just, I mean, if you want to get involved, like you really want to help out, maybe you want to participate and be a volunteer that day, we could really use you. Reach out. We're willing to take you on board. Any questions?
Counselor Adams.
Thank you, Mrs. Clements. Quick question to your sign that was up there. And now, are you guys going to put it on your Facebook page so we can share it? I just pulled yours up just to make sure.
Yeah.
That's not on there yet?
That's not, right, because we just posted, you know, I guess Facebook, I don't do it. That's my daughter did it.
No, that way I can share it.
So Facebook, you, when you put posts, you know, it hides the next one, right? So she just wanted to put all the thank you and all the pictures of this weekend and tomorrow. She has to get better at the events. If we had somebody who's an expert in these things, it'd be really great after all these years to get some help, but we do the best we can. So that will be on, that is being run on our Southbridge Community Access Television stations, and it's on their YouTube free, you know, so you can find this information out there. It's all over the web somewhere. You will find the Southbridge Holiday Parade. And flyers, posters will be coming out this week. If you need any, let me know. I'll let you hang them in your businesses or whatever, distribute them for us. Again, we can use your help. This is a nonprofit organization under the guise of the, the town. The town is our head, and we are just its workers, under, with its arms, its legs, its feet, bringing a little holiday spirit to Southbridge in the name of Rudy de Gregorio and, in his memory, I should say. So come on out and see some of the new things we've done, and, and we look forward to seeing you on the Town Common Saturday, November 25th. That's the Saturday after Thanksgiving.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, ma'am.
Counselor Marquetti?
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Chairman, through you. To Mrs. Clements, I just wanted to basically echo the Chairman's announcements, Agenda Item Number Five, where, yeah, just thank you so much to everybody involved. I know you, the same, you don't want to miss anybody, so you don't want to name the whole crew, but it is, it's really nice to be able to drive around Southbridge for so many weeks and just feel like you're in the holiday spirit. It always lifts people's mood, so thank you so much for all you guys do.
Well, I appreciate that, and it is weeks, and I just say to those who kind of every year say, "Oh, it's so early." We are blessed with good weather. Had it been bad weather, we'd be next week. If it's another snow or rain, it will take us another week, and therefore, you know, we all have families, and Thanksgiving comes, and it's a busy time, so we try to get it done when we can get it done. So thank you for your understanding.
Are there any other questions, statements by Counsel? Not? Thank you very much.
Have a good one.
Moving on to Agenda Item Number Nine, vote to approve the following gifts from the Veterans Council of Southbridge to be solely placed at the World Memorial Park at part of the Southbridge Veterans Monuments Initiative. A, one three-foot by six-foot sign. B, one four-inch by six-inch Franco-American World War I plaque.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Chenier, seconded by Montigny. Discussion? Counselor Chenier.
Mr. Adams is not here. Is that correct, four inches by six inches for the Franco?
Should be four feet. Four feet.
I think it's feet, it's a typo. I've seen it, it's four by six. Any further discussion? Don't, all those in favor? Opposed, unanimous, all present. Moving on to Agenda Item Number 10, vote to rescind the Agenda Item Number 26 of the October 16th, 2023 Town Council Meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Chenier, seconded by Montigny. Chairman?
Tom Hager?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
The Town Manager.
So the, this is related to the second item. Unfortunately, I think in the Subcommittee meeting, we didn't have the word "transfer" in the motion, but then when it went to the full Council, we had the word "transfer." It was not a transfer, we were using existing funds, so... So the rescission is just to get rid of that action and then replace it with the action below.
Any questions? No questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Moving on to Eleven, vote to approve a request to use FY24 funds of $980 from account 0011911517200, Group Insurance, and $1,470 from account number 00191158200300, Group Insurance School, to pay the unpaid FY23 invoice to Cook and Company Insurance Services in the amount of $25,040 that were not encumbered in the year end.
It does require two-thirds, too.
Yeah, require the two-thirds. Motion by Shinia.
Second by Dow.
Seconded by Dow. Discussion?
Excuse me.
Roll call.
Is the amount 2,540 or 20, you said 25,000?
I'm sorry, 2,540.
Correct number. Okay, thank you. Sorry. Roll call.
And you'll take a two-thirds vote. Roll call.
Counsel Shinia?
Yes.
Counsel Daniel?
Yes.
Counsel Dow?
Yes.
Counsel Lazo?
Yes.
Counsel Marquetti?
Yes.
Counsel Montigny?
Yes.
Counsel Ortiz?
Yes.
Counsel Rivas?
Yes.
Counsel Adams?
Yes.
Moving on to Agenda Item Number Twelve, vote to accept a donation to the police and fire departments from the Italian Club of $500 for each department and allow the respective chiefs to use it, use this donation as at their discretion. So move.
Second.
Motion by Shinia, seconded by Montigny. Recommendation, Counsel?
This was voted three to nothing at PPP Subcommittee in favor.
Any further discussion by counsel? If not, all is in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Moving on to Agenda Item Number Thirteen, vote to approve a police department transfer request of $7,500 from account 00121051100, salaries and wages, to account 001210524200, data processing to cover the additional cost for the storage of body-worn cameras, data, and the annual device license and fee. So move.
Second.
Motion by Shinia, seconded by Montigny. Counsel Shinia?
This was voted and approved three to nothing in PPP Subcommittee.
Recommendation was unanimous from Subcommittee. Any further discussion by counsel? If not, all is in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Moving on to Number Fourteen, vote to approve the surplus of the Southbridge Fire Department 2010 E350 ambulance, Medic One, that was replaced with a delivery of the new Medic One in August 2023. The vehicle will be set for auction, trade, and scrap, and allow the town manager to sign all related documents. So move.
Second.
Motion by Shinia, seconded by Dow. Counsel Shinia?
This was unanimously approved, sent in favor from PPP Subcommittee.
Mr. Town Manager?
Just if you could have a friendly amendment, as opposed to vote to approve, we just vote to declare as surplus.
I'll make the amendment.
And I'll second it.
There's a motion and a second to add the word "declare." Vote to declare. Motion by Adams, seconded by Montigny. Discussion on the amendment. Counsel Shinia?
Mr. Chairman, I mean, it clearly states, vote to approve the surplus of the Fire Department 2010 E350.
By, excuse me, Mr. Chair. By law, you have to declare. That's by law, it's declare as surplus.
Thank you.
Any further discussion by counsel on the amendment? If not, all is in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. On the main motion as amended, any further discussion? If not, all is in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Moving on to Fifteen, vote to accept the ambulance certified public expenditure reimbursement program, CPE FY23 report, and accept the approximate reimbursement in the amount of $184,015.80, and allow the town manager to sign all related documents. So move.
Second.
Motion by Dow, seconded by Shinia. Discussion?
This was approved, favorable in the Subcommittee, three to nothing.
Any further discussion? If not, all is in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Moving on to Sixteen, vote to approve a memorandum of understanding between the Town of Southbridge and Kurt Jackson for the Town of Southbridge Public Safety Communication System, and allow the town manager to sign all related documents. So move.
Second.
Motion by Shinia, seconded by Dow.
Mr. Chairman, this was voted to recommend to full council, PPP Subcommittee, three to nothing.
Recommendation would be unanimous at Subcommittee. Any further discussion? Counsel Marquetti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. When this was brought up at the Subcommittee, I said that I would fully support it. I know it's important to have good communication in the town. The radio equipment will be going on a tower on Blackmere Road in Dudley. I did ask about the police department, but apparently they can't get to the high school. So this is essential, and I fully support it. Thank you.
Any further discussion by counsel? If not, all is in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Moving on to Counsel's Forum Number Seventeen, Counsel Rivas.
So I'm going to start out with a kind of a question to our town manager. I know that we had talked about it a little bit earlier in the mid-year about the commissioner from the Department of Education coming to town and doing a presentation or talking to the council. I wanted to find out if that's been talked about with the receiver, with the commissioner, if there's been any communication about any type of presentation or conversation with the council.
Through you. I have my monthly scheduled meeting with Dr. Vala tomorrow, so I'll follow up with him to see if they have any timeline on that.
Great, thank you. So I wanted to mention the Literacy Volunteers Tutor and Student Recognition Event at the Ruth Wells Center that I attended on the first of November last week. And this is a great program. I don't know if everyone is familiar with the Literacy Volunteers. It's run for many, many years out of our library. Margaret Morrissey, our director, was the keynote speaker at their event. They really talk about the success stories in their program, tutors that give so much time to this program to help families and new arrivals, people that come to our community that need a helping hand to learn English. And so they recognize tutors and students. I know the student that they recognized newly passed their citizenship test, you know, it's a testament to all of the work that the volunteers do in this program. They are looking for volunteers, they're always looking for volunteers. If you'd like to become a volunteer, contact the director, Emily Farrell, at Jacob Edward's Library. They are also always looking for board members. If you feel so moved to give back to the community and join this great organization. So I just wanted to give them a plug and, you know, talk about the great work that happens in our community every single day. It was great to see, I'd never really seen all of the work behind Holiday Visions until I was at the Southbridge Business Partnership Meeting last week, and I was able to, you know, kind of participate a little bit, not as much as they do on the weekend with all of the work that they do. But there is an incredible amount of work that happens behind the scenes, and it was impressive to see sort of this huge workshop that they have on Mill Street. But I encourage people to check out their Facebook page, volunteer, even if it's a short amount of time. It was a lot of fun. I got to glitter some stars, and working with students, I get to do a lot of glittering. So that was a lot of fun. But I encourage people to reach out to Denise and her daughter Jillian. They do an incredible job in, you know, with all of this, and they always need volunteers. I also wanted to mention, Wellstorm Inc. is having a Masquerade Gala December 2nd, Saturday, from 6:00 to 11:00 at the DCU Center in Worcester. As many people know, Wellstorm provides a huge service in our community for food insecurity. They have the Bridge Fridge at RMG, and this is a fundraising event. So if you feel, you know, feel like getting dressed up for a Masquerade Gala in December, please, you know, get your tickets. You can go onto their Facebook page and get some tickets for that fun event and be able to support this incredible service that we have in our community. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Dow.
Thank you, Chair, through you. I just want to say to Counsel Ortiz and his family, sorry for your loss. That's all. Thank you.
Counsel Shinia?
All set.
Counsel Marquetti?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. First of all, I just wanted to respond once more about pay-as-you-throw because there still seems to be a misconception. Pay-as-you-throw changes nothing, it's just another funding source, that's all. You'll still get a flat fee. Pay-as-you-throw will help reduce your flat fee for everyone. So that's all I wanted to say about that. Also, at last meeting, I think I mentioned that we should start taking a look at the resumes for the recording secretary. I think I inadvertently said recording clerk. It's not a clerk, it's the recording secretary. So if the town manager has the names of those that have put their names forward, I'd appreciate it if he could get that to us so the council could start taking a look at that as soon as possible. And finally, I look forward to Saturday's Veterans Day festivities down across the street here. So that's it. Thank you.
Just a quick comment on the resumes. Counsel Jovan has given me the resumes. I've reviewed them. I'm sitting down with HR. There are quite a few resumes that came out. Some of them, we're going to screen through them, and they'll be pushed on to Subcommittee and we'll work on it on council. But Town Manager is on his A-game. His plate is full, and he's still rolling.
Thank you.
Moving on, Counsel Marquetti.
I'm all set tonight, thank you.
Counsel Adams?
Nothing tonight, Mr. Chair.
Counsel Ortiz?
Nothing, thank you.
Counsel Daniels?
Nothing this evening, thank you.
Moving on to Agenda Item Number Eighteen, discuss next meeting date. Mr. Vice Chairman?
Thank you. The next meeting will be Monday, November 20th, 2023, at 7:00 PM in the council chambers. Thank you.
Moving on to Agenda Item Nineteen, motion adjourned? So move. Second. By Shinia, seconded by Dow. All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Meeting adjourned.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. That's good. You're most. The council.